Wish to welcome everybody officially and declare the meeting open at ten twenty one AM. I would just like to advise that video will be available to the public. It's not live stream, it's webpage, thank you. We have councillor Purvin joining us online and councillor Littlemore is currently on leave of absence. I wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians on the land on which we stand, the Golnay people, and acknowledge my respect for their current and emerging leaders and those in the dreaming, and thank them for contributions they have made in building our community. Declarations of prescribed conflicts of interest or declarable conflicts of interest, I now invite those present to use this opportunity to make public any prescribed conflicts of interest or declarable conflicts of interest in respect of the items in the agenda. Councillors should use this opportunity to disclose and or comment on other councillors and or staff interests in accordance with the Act and regulations. Do we have any conflicts? Yes councillor Jessop?
Yes, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest or possibly a perceived one in regards to the confidential reports CCW zero triple zero three four eight and CCW triple zero three five zero. Just want to let you know that I have a nephew that is working for one of the companies that has tended, so I shall be giving the room.
Thank you, thank you for your declaration. Are there any further declarations to be made? No, we shall move on to item one point one, Growing the Casseri Coast. Ms Clark will present.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ms Clark?
Morning. Hey, so through to the chair, today I'm presenting the Growing the Casseri Coast Shopfront Improvement Programme Round One for two thousand and twenty five to two thousand and twenty six. So the Growing the Casseri Coast Shopfront Improvement Programme is a key initiative under council's Growing Stronger Together two thousand and thirty three Economic Development Strategy. It is aimed at revitalising commercial precincts and supporting local jobs, as well as stimulating economic activity across the Casseri Coast region. By funding improvements such as facade upgrades, accessibility enhancement, security measures and aesthetic detailing, the programme delivers far reaching benefits including enhancing business visibility, encouraging foot traffic in our CBDs, boosting sales for businesses and improving public safety. These outcomes support not only individual businesses but the wider appeal of the Casseri Coast as a destination for visitors and investors. Priority for this round was given to projects within the Mission Beach Local Plan Tourism Precinct, responding to specific local challenges such as infrastructure disruptions and recent severe weather, as well as recommendations from the Queensland Small Business Commissioner. This targeted approach aligns with the Mission Beach Business Recovery Plan and ensures support reaches those that are most in need. This report considers the submissions received in the Growing the Casseri Coast Shopfront Improvement Programme Round One. For the two thousand and twenty five twenty six round one of the Shopfront Improvement Programme received exceptional interest from local businesses with fifty six applications submitted, and that is far exceeding the initial budget allocation of forty thousand dollars. The total value of eligible projects assessed is one point five five million, supported by more than one point three million in private co-investment. The total council funding sought through these applications is two hundred and four thousand nine hundred and ninety seven dollars and fifty five cents exclusive of GST. This represents a return of investment of six hundred and fifty nine percent, which means for every dollar that council invests, that is six dollars and fifty nine cents that goes back into our local economy. This outstanding response underscores the strong confidence of the business community in the local economy and the relevance of council's economic development initiatives. While council currently has a forty thousand dollar allocation to this programme, the quality and scale of applications demonstrate the broad community and economic benefits that could be achieved through increased funding. To ensure transparency and equity is recommended that the highest ranked project, as outlined in Appendix A, be funded within the existing allocation. This ensures that the most impactful proposals proceed with the remaining budget. Given the significant private sector commitment and the opportunity to support local jobs and trades, council may wish to consider increasing the current funding allocation through Budget Review One. Alternatively, council may also choose to retain the remaining eligible applications for consideration in a future round. And this is always subject to budget capacity and either approach would reinforce council's commitment to small business, town centre renewal and delivering the Growing Stronger Together two thousand and thirty three vision. So the recommendations before council today are that council thank the applicants for their submissions in round one of the Shopfront Improvement Programme for twenty five twenty six. Note that the Growing the Casseri Shopfront Improvement Programme Round One was oversubscribed with one point five five million in eligible projects assessed. Note the total budget for round one of forty thousand dollars exclusive of GST. Note the total funding sought through the fifty six applications presented in Appendix A is greater than the budget allocation by a hundred and sixty four thousand nine hundred and ninety seven dollars and fifty five cents exclusive of GST. And note the successful projects as highlighted in Appendix A.
Very good. I've got a comment to make at first, but it's very refreshing to see the number of applications of businesses wanting to actually make improvements that will make our towns look and feel loved again. I'm constantly being asked about cleanliness of our towns and I know times are challenging, but I can see the enormous benefit both visually and morally if, you know, we were to support such a great cause. I mean, it's been an important part of my own personal campaign to get back to the basics and see the places looking shiny and clean again. So I would like to move an alternative motion. That council, one, thank the applicants for their submissions in round one, Growing the Casseri Coast Shopfront Improvement Programme twenty five to twenty six. Two, note that the Growing the Casseri Coast Shopfront Improvement Programme twenty five twenty six round one was oversubscribed with one point five two million in eligible projects assessed. Three, note the total budget for round one of forty thousand ex GST. Note that total of funding sought through the fifty six applications presented in Appendix A is greater than the budget allocation by a hundred and sixty four thousand nine hundred and ninety seven dollars and fifty five cents ex GST. Five, note the assessment of the fifty six applications as presented in Appendix A. Six, approve a total contribution of two hundred and four thousand nine hundred and ninety seven dollars and fifty five cents to leverage a program spend of one point five two million dollars. And seven, request that the chief executive officer make the budget amendment of one point six four thousand nine hundred and ninety seven dollars and fifty five cents ex GST through Budget Review One. And I would also like to give my reasoning, other than my comments at the beginning, for funding the full amount rather than limiting support to the initial allocation, which represents a strategic investment in the economic and social vibrancy of the Casseri Coast, which I mentioned prior. The unprecedented demand for the programme evidenced by the fifty six eligible applications and over one point three million in business co-investment demonstrates that we're serious about what we putting our money where our mouth is and leading by example by demonstrating strong local confidence and a unique opportunity for council to unlock significant private sector value. Approving the funding will ensure that all assessed and eligible projects proceed resulting in visible improvements across the town, increased foot traffic, local job creation and support for trades and suppliers as mentioned by Ms Clark. Importantly, the return on the investment, six hundred and forty two percent, highlights the cost effectiveness of this initiative while aligning with council's broader goals of economic activation, town centre beautification and business resilience as outlined in the Growing Stronger Together Strategy. By funding the programme in full, council reinforces its leadership role in supporting small businesses and delivering community-wide benefits. So I know I've just had a big mouthful of information there, but the important thing is the points that I'm keeping out in my recommendation. So I'll be first looking for someone to second the recommendation. I will second that recommendation.
I'll second second the recommendation.
Councillor Purvin, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I'm all in agreeance with it as well. I'll be happy to second too. But I'll support.
Third, second, second, third, second. So I've taken it, we're seconded. So we're going on the new recommendation.
Yeah, oh, can I speak?
Speak. Do you want to speak for? Please. That's all right.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, through the chair, I just want to thank the mayor for actually bringing this tentative motion. It was, I sat on the panel for this and there was fifty six applications. And seeing the enthusiasm of our business owners, building owners, really investing back into their business, but also the return on visits is one, I think it's six dollars for every one dollar spent that is going to be put back into the economy. So not only do these businesses employ people, but the trades and services that are going to be delivering these projects also employ people and put money back into the economy, which supports our local sporting clubs and community events and all of that. So it's a whole circle of life happening right now. And I want to thank the mayor for putting that alternative motion, because I think that this is going to be a great thing for our whole region. And yeah, thanks.
Any further comments?
I just have one comment, if you don't mind. I think this is a great incentive and I do appreciate you, mayor, for putting this up. But I just wonder, are we setting a precedent for further rounds?
So, or I don't know, I don't know whether you want to answer that or I could put my opinion forward, but I don't think we're setting a precedent, because the actual shopfront improvement scheme programme is not a given. It's something that is made, decided on at budget time, whether we do it or whether we don't do it and what the feeling is in general at that particular time. So no, I don't think we're setting a precedent.
Sorry, what I'm getting at is, yes, we have already budgeted and we budgeted forty thousand for this.
Yep.
Now we're looking at spending over two hundred thousand.
Correct.
Is this the precedent that we're setting that we can just change the amount? Or, I mean, obviously the benefits are there. I think it's wonderful.
Yep.
Just this money's going into our economy.
Can I just make a comment? We're not, what was the word you used?
Spending.
Setting a precedent.
Spending. I think that's the thing we've got to do is we're investing, investing back into our community. Okay, so yeah, we're not spending an extra whatever it is.
No, but I'm.
Back into what I'm getting.
Yeah, yeah, through the chair, sorry. Is that when we do a budget, we do a budget for a reason. So as long as, yes, we can afford to do this.
I'll come to you in a minute, Nick. Councillor Baines.
All good.
Thank you, Chair. I understand what councillor Jessop is asking and what she's talking about. And then again, this is a personal opinion. You know, I've second second, so I'm very supportive of this. And I think, so I think councillor Jessop, we need to possibly, this is an opportunity. It's a very rare thing that these programmes have been run previously. One of them, years ago, we had trouble even hitting the mark at the forty thousand. So I think we take the opportunity, we make the investment. Again, I reiterate councillor McLeod's words as well, and thank you, mayor, putting this forward. But this is about, this board as leader showing confidence in our region and confidence in our community. I would like to suggest that in the future, we see this progress on a more regular basis, which will settle it out, because we're not going to get everything done this in the twenty five twenty six. But I think there's an opportunity and I, the great value to me is we're spending ten percent and there's this ninety percent of money on top that I think is going to our local contractors into our community. It's going around in the community. So understand your premise, but I think in my mind, this is a great opportunity that we need to take.
I fully agree. It's a great opportunity. I understand the reasoning, but I just had to ask the question.
Oh, no, yeah, I understand.
Being responsible.
Yeah.
Because we did set this in a budget.
Yep.
So I'm happy to second, third and fourth as well.
Councillor Purvin.
Yeah, more just along with Jeff just much covered it there when he said that. And it's true, like sometimes I may go, there's not enough people put in for it, like Jeff previously said, it's happening around. But I think also within the policy and the guidelines, I'm fairly certain businesses can't, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms Clark, they can't go year on year, the same one is there, certain guidelines as well.
So through to the chair, they have to have already processed their acquittal. So they've got six months, then ninety days post that. So it would be unlikely that they could go for each consecutive round, yeah.
Yeah, correct. So I think you'll get to a point in time where, you know, some of these businesses get their building up to scratch and they do look beautiful and that. And there's going to be years where they don't need carrier work on them.
Yeah.
Chewie?
Yeah, thank you. I fully support the recommendation as well and well done to Ms Clark for all the work. Because I know it's been a huge project. Wonderful to see a community come on board. And I know it's in the report, but could you just give a breakdown, Ms Clark, of what we might like to, what we're expecting to see from what the applications have been put forward as far as the improvements go? I know they were covered a wide range of items, but if you don't mind giving just a brief rundown on what we might see when we walk up the street in twelve months' time. And also further to that, we talked about Mission Beach centric because of the works, but my understanding it has come from throughout the Casseri Coast. So if you can talk to that as well, I'd be grateful. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Through to the chair. So we'll start with the types of improvements that you will see throughout the region. So predominantly in Mission Beach, we are seeing and then try to match the style of the revitalisation works that's occurring down there. So we're seeing some landscaping that should be in line with the project landscaping that's occurred. We're seeing awnings being erected and the reason for that is to create that shade where they're getting that increased foot traffic. And we're also seeing in Mission, which is pretty exciting, is like the increase of like the glassing in some of the buildings, so the glazing, so that you can see into the shop and it's a bit more interactive and then some accessibility requirements. And then when we move to say Innisphal, predominantly that's around cleaning and painting and that heritage restoration, so that art deco feel is what we're seeing there. And Tully, it's a real mix of everything. We're seeing improvements to the external detailing. So it's more about features, like we've got a project there that is looking to create a new business. So it's kind of like, I don't want to talk too much to that business's project, but they'll make it look like it's the same vibe and feel of their business name and what they're selling and things like that. So we're seeing different things across different areas.
And further to that, if I may, through the chair, you talked about a timeline for these works. We know that we're short of tradespeople, so have we factored that into as a consideration? And if for some reason the works are not completed, God forbid, within that timeframe, what is the consequence there? Thank you.
So through to the chair, the timeline is certainly something that we've taken into consideration. So they have six months from agreement executed date to be able to complete their work. So for example, Mission Beach, if predominantly it's awnings and there's structural upgrades, we would want to make sure that everything's in place before they sign their agreement. So they will receive a letter of offer, but their agreement might be dated post that, around that time. And sorry, what was the other?
If for some reason the businesses change, works aren't completed, what happens then?
Yeah. So also in the agreement, there is a requirement to notify if there's any impacts and then that would be up to the discretion and it falls back to the delegation of the CEO to extend that agreement. However, there shouldn't be any issues with the timeline, because we're negotiating that letter of offer and agreement date.
Yeah, okay, but.
If they do, they're required to pay the money.
That's my question. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Very good. Councillor McLeod?
Sorry, through the chair, just one more thing. I just wanted to like make mention that the works for these applications to be successful, they've got to be using local businesses in the Casseri Coast region. So we're not investing this money into trades in Cairns or Towns or anything like that. We're putting the money back to be spent, the businesses in our region. So I just want to make that very clear. That's part of the guidelines.
Further, thank you. Thank you on the team for a great job and extended their services doing all of those applications. Thanks councillor Jessop for your question. It was very important that we understand all of the science behind the decisions that we make. However, I do feel confident that the budget review has definitely got the ability to fund the full allocation and I'm pretty sure you can support me on that.
Yeah, through the chair, the budget review process is that formal process for reviewing our budget. I think we all know as a local government that we have an unrestricted cash expense cover ratio that's very favourable there at the moment. And we've historically understood that it's typically that operating surplus ratio is the area that council sits on that red line with regard to how the state view us. But that's primarily because we have such a large asset base that in recent times, council haven't funded as much of the depreciation from our rate base. And we've been focused on attracting grant funding. And we've actually got grant funding going towards asset renewals and upgrades this year than the total depreciation amount. So like I said, the really key ratios that we should be looking at is, you know, the operating cash ratio and that unrestricted cash ratio, which are strong. And we'll work through that through Budget One with councillors. Plenty of opportunities with additional interest that's been earned, fees and charges, even shifting some of our grant funding to find those opportunities.
Thank you. So we go to the vote now, after all of that. That was great. Thank you. So those in favour? We're all in favour? No?
Councillor Purvin?
Nicholas stands up.
Thank you.
Put his hand up. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, councillor Purvin.
Well done, well done.
Well done, thank you. And.
Party in the streets.
So now we move into the closed session. So this meeting will now be closed to the public in accordance with Local Government Act, section two five four J, one three G, negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public decision would be likely to be prejudiced in the interests of the local government to consider the following confidential report items, two point one, CCW triple zero three four eight and item two point two, CCW triple zero three five zero. Shall I leave the building?
Happy to move.
Move, thank you. Happy to second, thank you. Moved by councillor Baines, seconded by councillor Chewie.
All good.
Thank you. Go back into session, thank you. Those in favour? Go across to you, Mr Goodman, to present the next two items.
Thank you, mayor. And if I can, just by introduction, that identify that both of these projects are very similar, identical funding, identical event which caused this. So I will cut short item two point two with the bits which are identical just for the sake of saving some time. Purpose of the first report councillors is for councillor to consider submitted tenders for CCW zero 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 three four eight, Reaper slope stabilisation on Cowley Creek Road. The report seeks council endorsement to award this to MGN Civil Proprietary Limited. The background to this project is that tropical cyclone Jasper crossed the Queensland coast as a category two system in the vicinity of Woodjool Woodjool on around, sorry, on thirteenth of December two thousand and twenty three. This is associated with an extraordinary flooding event causing large scale isolation, widespread power outages across North Queensland and significant impacts agriculture, animal welfare, small business and tourism, and of course, Casseri Coast's own infrastructure. Council is activated for this event for a range of disaster assistance through the joint state Commonwealth Disaster Recovery Funding Arrangements to address immediate and long term impacts from these events. DRFA is a cost sharing arrangement between the Commonwealth and the states and territories in Queensland. This programme is managed on a whole of government basis by the Queensland Reconstruction Authority. This particular project has category B funding, which is to provide assistance to local governments for the restoration of essential public assets. This project is managed by Reaper submissions to construct the assets to pre-disaster function. This project should be and one hundred percent funded through the QRA. We've obviously got to work through an acquittal's process to make sure that that's done properly. The scope of works here on Cowley Creek Road is one of the more significant landslips in our region that is a result of from the TC Jasper event on the edge of Cowley Creek Road. It's about a hundred metres long and the remediation is to comprise construction of reinvestment works, including rock fill and armour. Twenty eighth of August two thousand and twenty five, Casseri Coast Regional Council resolved to establish a register of pre-qualified suppliers for slope remediation. The procurement plan for the provision of Reaper slope stabilisation on Cowley Creek Road for this contract was approved by the Procurement Review Board on the fifth of September two thousand and twenty five. Casseri Coast Regional Council subsequently called for quotations from this panel through vendor panel with the request for quotes closing in October. Councillors, the recommendation is that council award contract CCW zero 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 three four eight, Reaper slope stabilisation Cowley Creek Road to MGN Civil Proprietary Limited for the amount of one million two hundred and thirty six thousand seven hundred and sixty nine dollars GST exclusive. And in accordance with the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, council delegate authority to the chief executive officer to enter into a contract, negotiate, finalise and execute any and all matters associated with or in relation to the contract subject to council's normal procurement policies and practices.
Councillor McLeod?
Thank you. Through the chair, one, I would like to move this recommendation. December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty three is when all this water hit our region for it clears day. And this site has been a hot topic in my division and I am all for getting this through and started so that this can be done and started.
Thank you.
Thing has frozen, so I cannot free-brow my hat, so.
And I'll second it, because I also had my ears lowered on this, because it's been a long time coming and I think it needs to be done sooner rather than later, given that anything that happened around the corner. We don't want to preempt anything, but in the review of all this, I have seconded it, but I would like to ask that from the commentary within the report, that a review of the performance of the panel is done, given the responses that we got. So could we take that on notice from our office?
Yep, happy to undertake that.
Thank you.
Councillor Wood?
Any further questions or comments from anybody in relation to the works or?
That's a comment. It's just great to see it come forward. I will say the timeframes around this, and I know there's been a lot of frustration within community. But these are funds that are managed by the state government on behalf of the federal government and it's quite a process. I don't think there's, it hasn't been council trying to hold this up. I think, and I wanted to congratulate Mr Goodman and his team on the great works they've done, that we've finally got it there. And I will say, we're probably getting a little bit off subject, but I understand that the ledger sort of barriers or the reduction in red tape work that's going on at the moment within the state government will hopefully, let's say, see these processes simplified into the future. I mean.
A quicker process. A quicker process.
That's what we'll hopefully, let, let's see where we land. But the, the rhetoric is changing and the, the, there is a real, there is a strong push to make these things not, the rules have to be in place. But over the years, rules have been layered and layered and layered and it's, it's gotten a bit, it's almost accretion of rules, David, that sometimes makes, and it's not the issue with the departments, it's, it's the way some of the policies are written that don't give them any room to move. So I think that moving forward is going to be a great process, but I just wanted the community to understand that Mr Goodman and his team and council in general have done everything they can to get this working and let's go. And we're holding a special meeting today to make sure that this is done. So let's get these works started. So I'd like to congratulate councillors and especially Mr Goodman and his team. Thank you. Work well done.
Thanks councillor Baines. And I don't think it's a, a matter of changing the rules. I think it's just a matter of getting them to understand that they need to make the process a little bit quicker because, you know, between one event and the other, one was in twenty twenty three and we've since had another event and still haven't fixed up what we didn't fix in twenty twenty three, in that sense. So, you know, we'll keep pushing the, pushing the bar to try and get them to, you know, be a little bit more.
Just good. But they are working towards it.
Conscious.
We can knock off these.
They are working on it, but it does, I can see why the public get frustrated.
I know.
We get just as frustrated, but anyway, we're getting there. So we'll keep working.
Suggest it'll probably be a great conversation at the LGAQ conference next week.
Yes. Thank you. Back over to you. Sorry.
All right. Well, I guess, thank you through the chair. You councillor Baines. I, I would point out the, the other complicating factors in getting us to this, to this point in time where we can hopefully today get a resolution to award a tender is that this, this event cyclone Jasper just didn't impact Casseri Coast Regional Council. And the consultants that we need to engage for geotechnical advice and design and the contractors that we need to engage to, to undertake these works have been and continue to be in significantly high demand right across North Queensland. And to be, to be fair, that is, has been a significant limiting factor on this, our, our ability to turn this around quickly. One of the things which we hope in future will provide quicker turnaround is the implementation of this panel of providers that we've got. And we do have contractors that are on that, that actually have designed and construct capacity. So while we definitely will undertake that review and, and satisfy ourselves or otherwise, that, that, that is a good way to continue to do this sort of procurement. One of the tests will be, hopefully in some years' time, that when the next event happens and our ability to respond more quickly in the future.
Well said.
We must say, I've got to prioritise too, because those, those guys are a dime a dozen, really, at the end of the day. So we've got to move on a second and we'll take a vote. Thank you. All in favour? Councillor Pervin?
All good. All good.
Thank you.
Councillors, the, the next report, as I said, I'll, I'll, I won't do the stuff which is identical to the previous report. The purpose of this report is for council to consider submitted tenders for CCW zero, 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 three, five, zero, Reaper slope stabilization on number six branch road, number six branch road at South Johnson. This report seeks council's endorsement to award this tender to MGN Civil Proprietary Limited. And procurement was conducted via restricted tender following establishment of a register of pre-qualified suppliers for slope remediation by public tender, ensuring compliance for council procurement policy and the local government legislation. MGN's demonstrated best value for money in alignment with council's objectives. It's, it's a very good tender. Approval will facilitate serviceability of the road in this location, reduce risk of further riverine slope instability at this location. Similar in scope to the Cowley Creek Road, it is just over a hundred metres long. The works, the remediation works comprise construction of revetment works, including rock fill and armour. The identical procurement process was undertaken to the previous report. Obviously, the, the funding arrangements are identical, well, it is obvious, but, but it is identical process in the funding administered by QRA, full costs coming back to council on acquittal. The recommendation council is that council award contract CCW zero, 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 three, five, zero, Reaper slope stabilization, number six branch road to MGN Civil Proprietary Limited for the amount of two million, three hundred and twenty one thousand, eight hundred and thirty five dollars GST exclusive. And in accordance with the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, council delegate authority to the chief executive officer to enter into a contract, negotiate, finalize and execute any and all matters associated with or in relation to the contract subject to council's normal procurement policies and practices.
Thank you.
Happy to move.
You'll move?
Yep, happy to move.
Second, second up.
Can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just in relation to that, you noticed the previous tender was given to MGN Civil as well. The capacity to undertake those works, Dave?
Yeah, through the chair. So the certainly was part of the assessment is with an alternative recommendation in either Cowley or number six branch road to award those to two different contractors if there was a any way a reasonable expectation that that could be delivered and both of them complete by, by the end of this calendar year, significantly lowering the, the risk of flooding events causing additional damage. That wasn't going to be able to achieve with awarding these two separate contractors. And so the intent would be if, if council accepts our recommendation is that we'll work with MGN to ensure that, actually the words are in the, in the report, that the foundation work be completed in the dry season as soon as possible, get that, what the foundation works really means is that, is the toe of this, the, the structural elements that we get the in-water components of that done prior to the, prior to the, when we expect the wet season is going to kick off. And, and then we can do the balance of it, or the contractor can undertake the balance of that post.
What does the toe mean again?
It's the bottom of this, but so the, it's the bottom, it's through, through the chair, it's the bottom of the structure. It's the bit that's holding the rest of the structure in and stops it sliding into the, into the river.
Right.
Big heavy bit to stabilise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm presuming from, given, given the first tender in the previous resolution and this one, the contractor will begin work and commence taking site possession pretty much straight away?
We will, through the chair, that's certainly what we would like to happen. We've got to go through those finalization of contract and so that would certainly be the intent is to work quickly with, with MGN, get a contract signed and get them underway.
Yeah.
They're certainly indicated in their tender that they are available and ready to go.
All right. Thank you.
No further questions or comments. Okay. So we'll go to the vote. So all in favour? Councillor Pervin?
All good.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks councillors. Thank you, Mr Goodman.
Yes, back to the room.
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. See.
Hang on, Nick.
Hang on, Nicholas.
Goodness, how many cans of coke is that?
Oh, that's.
Well, you, I think you owe me one and you owe me one.
Let us wait.
You know, only because people, you know, I haven't stopped counting.
No, no, you continue to count.
You know, I like to play the game.
I know, no, understand.
Does make me have a little chuckle.
Thank you all. And there's no further business and I now declare the meeting closed at eleven, twelve. Thank you.
Well done.